I don't know how that's gonna work for televised, you know.
Pulling your mask down to cough is kinda counterproductive, I think. All right. Please call to order the January 24th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Grott?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Oppone is absent. Mr. Luray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I'm gonna add one item that had been distributed to the board. There were the Parks and Rec Master Plan will be presented by the Planning Director. This body actually has the charge of recommending that to the board. So with that one correction, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of minutes from the January 10th meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, under correspondence, the City of Rochester has a master plan public hearing. Do you want to address that, Julie?
Yes, thank you Chairman. The City of Rochester has drafted their master plan and it is available for reviewing by the department. I believe I touched on this at a previous meeting. There's also supplemental information from Oakland County, but for the most part, where we border Rochester, it's pretty developed and there's no concerns with the proposed master plan.
Great, thank you. This evening, we have five site plans.
Moved to receive and file.
Thank you. Their support, moved and supported?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have five site plans.
There we go. Sorry about that.
No, no. One request is for an extension and the other four are our final reviews. So they have been in some capacity before. First one being site plan number 21-34, Tom Leoni for an industrial building at 13280 West Star Drive.
Good evening. So I have the site plan waiting for approval for it. We had it done.
Name an address, please. And then when you're...
Tom Leoni.
Okay. And your address?
1548 Galena, Rochester Hills.
When you're done presentation, then this goes with everyone who speaks, then sign in after, so.
Okay, then sign in. Okay.
Go ahead.
So we're just waiting for the approval for the industrial building that we had designed. It was approved before, maybe 10, 15 years ago, but now we're... My architect made it a little up to date and now we're just looking.
Good evening. Ahmad Potras. I work with Calagen Architects, 871 Austin Drive, Troy, Michigan. I believe we submitted site plan and then we got comments. Now we're back to get site plan approval. And I'm working on the floor plan elevations and urban land is working on the site plan. I believe we addressed all the township comments on the revised site plan requiring lighting, landscaping and everything else. And also, we submitted colored rendering with the colored elevations, with the materials and anything required by the township. And we're here to answer your questions.
Very good. So Julie, do you agree?
I agree. Chairman Moffett, we've performed a preliminary review on the site plan. The elevations are a little bit nicer than a typical industrial building. They have some nice features on this and they've addressed all of these site plan comments that are in the review, provided ownership documentation, cross-access agreement. So I don't have any issues with the site plan at all.
Great, thank you. To the board, do any board members wish to comment or have any questions on this request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I move to approve site plan number 21-34 for Tom Leoni for an industrial building at 13280 West Star Drive, located on the south side of West Star and west of Shana Road, north of 23 Mile, subject to the submission of revised site plans addressing all departmental comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
And Chair Wilches. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item?
Chairman Moffett, if I can collect those plans back at the end of the meeting.
All right. Yeah, keep them coming.
Thank you.
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll save a tree.
For two?
Yes, since when? After we get the big bag of paper. Next item is site plan number 22-04, Bennett Donaldson for 23 Mile LLC. And this again is also a final review.
Good evening. Scott Zawada, 203 Oakdale Street, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067. I'm here for Mr. Donaldson. He was unable to attend today. We are here for our final site plan review for our site condo at the development at 23 Mile and Shana.
Okay. Julie, do you want to comment?
Yeah, just minor comments. Usually, this is the second phase of these developments, industrial site condo developments. Originally, we go through a preliminary review and work out all the details. At that time, during the preliminary and the final, the applicant is to obtain all the engineering, any approvals from the county and from the state. They have done that at this time, Chairman Moffett. They've addressed all of the engineer's comments and the attorney's comments, the department comments. The only outstanding item is they're gonna require a variance for Unit 5 because it does not meet the front with requirement in industrial subdivisions. So that is the only thing. Once they obtain that variance, they can go ahead and proceed with the project.
One thing I noticed on the proposed motion, it doesn't really offer a favorable recommendation from this body. So whomever the motion maker may be, if they feel so inclined, maybe just make that kind of reference and then we can share that with the zoning board of appeals. So maybe hopefully make it a little easier for you. Any questions from the board or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve the final site plan 22-04 for Bennett Donaldson for Shelby 23 condominium development, located on the south side of 23 Mile Road, west of Hayes Road. Parcel number 23-07-24-201-034, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comments and obtaining a favorable variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
Chair Wilches. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is John Vitale for the Porsche Detroit North.
Good evening. Phil Ruggieri, on behalf of the petitioner and also as the seller of the property. And I have John Vitale. He's our architect for the site plan. And if any specific questions are asked, John will try to answer them. We have Frank Hannah, our civil engineer, on standby as well. But John, if you may want to make your presentation as to the building.
So again, my name is John Vitale. I'm with firm Stuckey and Vitale Architects. And I'm happy to introduce our project this evening.
Can I get the address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. The address, my firm's address is 27172 Woodward Avenue, Royal Oak, Michigan.
Thank you.
And what we're proposing this evening is a brand-new dealership located right now where there's a currently vacant racquetball court building. We're gonna completely demolish the existing building. We're proposing approximately a 25,000 square foot building, about a 3,900 square foot mezzanine that'll be in the building. This building will probably be one of the very first Generation 5 Porsche dealerships. There right currently is only one other in Palm Springs that was built in 2021. So this is a state-of-the-art design, been developed by Porsche, introducing here in this location. You can see the building has a metal skin. And the inspiration for that building is, of course, if you can imagine the rear end of a Porsche Carrera 911, and that's kind of what inspired this sort of wrinkled view that you see on the corner. I think it's a very attractive building, metal-skinned building. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have. So it's a very state-of-the-art dealership. The inside and outside, the design has been a national prototype that's been developed by a firm that Porsche has done their past work with. So we're happy to introduce this here Shelby Township.
Thank you. Julie, did you want to offer your thoughts?
Yes, thank you Chairman. This site plan as well, we did a preliminary comment. So most of the comments have been addressed that are listed in the site plan comments. The only thing that I have to say is Section 5.27 of the Township's zoning ordinance regulates facade materials and all buildings except one family dwelling facing a street, including buildings located on a corner lot and having frontage on a side street, shall have exterior surface consisting of face brick or other similar decorative building material or as approved by the planning commission. So with that being said, the north wall is just cinder block or some sort of material. So I would recommend...
The north wall is actually a corrugated metal panel. And I did bring some samples of the material colors for you to look at as well. But there's a lot of reasoning that goes behind the design of Porsche. The actual size of the panel, the proportion of the panel, the linear shape of the building is all kind of developed on the idea of a car going fast. And there's a lot of effort that's gone into the design and the actual linear fashion. And the entire Porsche concept inside and outside of the building is all part of this national prototype that they're developing. So they prefer to keep the... We talked about this idea. They really would prefer to keep that prototype intact. It's something that they're going to be carrying out worldwide. So it's important to them. It means a lot to them. There's a lot of meaning behind the design. And that's kind of why they're hoping to carry that design.
Julie, did you have some other comments? Why don't you let her finish her comments before you then kind of jump in.
No, basically, like I said, we did a preliminary. Most of those comments that are listed in the site plan review have been addressed. They've been taken care of. The biggest thing that hasn't been taken care of, like I said, is the facade. So to break that up even, like the north wall, I would say if you can incorporate some different materials and if you are willing to incorporate maybe a brick up until the top of the post that is around the building, I think that would look nice, especially with it being visible heading south on mound.
Okay. To the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I like the overall design of what you're proposing, but can you explain to me this? You said something about the black corrugated panels supposed to symbolize a car going fast. I mean, can you...
The horizontal panels are formed horizontally. So they've actually taken proportion of the panels and it's a linear horizontal design. And that's what they're trying to emphasize, is that horizontal go-fast feel.
Like I said, I like the look. I'm just concerned about the two, especially the wall that you can see from M59, that big black wall. I don't know. I'd like to see something different on that, maybe carry some of that nice metal you have at the top along the wall. Something to break it up because I do agree, it's this nice frontage and then you've got these two sides of this black panels, this dark wall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. I'm actually, I think I could accept what you've proposed. It's an area that, to me, it's an area of the township that is in dire need of some regentrification and this sort of does this and I think it would encourage some other... And we had some discussion about a Taco Bell a few years ago that folks thought was a little too avant-garde and it's actually fit in nice and it's helped kind of spruce up another area that needed a little bit. So yeah, I guess I'm less inclined to tell the designers at Porsche, you know... I don't think it's so much out of scale that it doesn't fit there, that it's like an eyesore. So yeah, I don't know. Now, if this board wanted to add another layer, we could even refer it to maybe ZBA and have, you know, it dealt with another set of eyes looking at it. I don't know if that's necessary, but it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to make that a condition. That was just something I would like to see. I do really like what you've done. And being at that corner of the township, as Mr. Moffett said, reinvigorating the area and having that be an entryway to that part of the township. I didn't know Porsche was in such a high demand in Shelby Township. It's good to know that they are because I think that's gonna be a good location for that building.
It's gonna be a wonderful location, a very high-tech-looking building. And that's what kind of pushes that metal feel. I think they're really trying to communicate the high-tech nature of the car and that inspiration, the car itself and the building is a lot of what the design is based on. And I understand your comment, too.
I've had this property for two years and I've had a lot of people coming to look at it. I've turned down a multitude of options. I wanted the best to come into Shelby Township. And as God would have it, this is a tremendous asset to come in our community.
I agree.
Driving on M59, it's gonna be like a starship entrance into our township and in our county. You just can't get a Porsche dealership. We have nothing like this in Macomb County. So I'm ecstatic. I think that building is superb. You know, I don't want to mess with a national product like that. It's just gonna be like, as Mr. Moffett said, it's a beautiful building. So, you know, let's not tamper with it. I mean...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grott?
The question on that, I like this and I'm gonna support this, but I have a question regarding that black wall. And this is to our planner. Is it possible in the future to add something to it or put a name on it or advertise the dealership? Because it's gonna be nice, just open a black wall, right? And any plans to put any?
It's actually a corrugated panel, so it's not a flat panel. So there is a lot of texture to it. So I think you'll see basically a very horizontal kind of linear feel to it. It's not just a flat panel. So it'll be a dark panel, but it is, it does have a pretty corrugation to it.
I'm ready to make a motion if it's okay.
Let's see if anyone else wants to comment and I'll be happy to call in. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Grott?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve site plan number 22-02, John Vitale, Stuckey Vitale Architects for Porsche Detroit North, located on the east side of mound north of M59. subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all departmental comments and planning commission comments.
Support.
Moved by Grott, support by Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
And Chair Wilches. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
John, good to see you again.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Next item, site plan number 22-03, Tony Gallo for Town Center Villas Number 2.
Good evening for the record. Again, Phil Ruggieri, here on behalf of the petitioner. With me, the owner of the property, Tony Gallo. I also have Andy Wakelin, our engineer, here to answer any specific questions.
Mr. Julie, make sure you speak into the mic with the masks on. Yeah, I can hear you.
Again, Phil Ruggieri for the record and Tony Gallo, he's the owner of the property. We have Andy Wakelin, our engineer, here to answer any questions regarding the site plan. But basically, I believe, planning through Julie has the design features. This property was originally approved back in 2007. And then this whole site plan was approved for 105 units in January of 2021. There were 16 remaining sites that Tony has presented to take care of his site plan. And he's adopting the same theme, floor plan, elevations, et cetera, that he has on the 105 that are currently under construction. So that's basically where we're at at this point. You want to pass those out?
Yeah, through the chair, if I may, the planning director had asked for some revised elevations in the rear. Wanted to get a rear perspective. And it also asked for us to consider moving the dumpster. So this plan reflects that, if I may approach.
Yeah, there are currently 105 units that are under construction as we speak. These are just 16 remaining that have added a leasing office and a maintenance unit because you're in excess of 100 units. You have to pull up 121. We need to have that full-time staffing at this site. So because of the number of units, being 121 now, we need to have the leasing room and the maintenance room in addition to the 16 units. That's why we're here today for the site plan on the 16 units.
Right, okay. Julie, do you want to offer your comments?
Thank you Chairman. One of the biggest things that I had when we did the preliminary review was the location of the dumpster, which I believe Mr. Gallo or Mr. Ruggieri is gonna present on an optional location and the actual facade of the building itself. As you know, Town Center was originally, had design details for elevations. Being that this building is along Lakeside Boulevard, I think it would be appropriate if the facade in the elevations are similar to the existing buildings on the road as well. We've approved a project at the southeast area of this development and most of the elevations consist of architectural millwork, columns, cornices, profiles. If you can show some of those facades, please. Including concrete masonry wall at the bottom with patio. So I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that it has to look exactly like this, but similar to some of those buildings. I understand that there is redwood in that area, but those buildings do not face Lakeside Boulevard. They're all within their own area in the development. Also, we have Lakeside Boulevard townhomes that is just east of this site, too. On the north side of Lakeside Boulevard would consist of full brick facades with peaks and sort of extended porches and also Harvard Oaks, which is on the south side of Lakeside Boulevard, across the street from Lifetime Fitness, that has a full brick facade with, you know, peaks and different type of structural and architectural features that I think would be, you know, would be consistent with what we're looking for that's in the Shelby Town Center.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have to say, I would agree. I mean, I'd be even willing to consider, I mean, that site could probably even take a little more density if you could address the parking work. There was allowances that were given to the other units that were done on the elevations just because, one, two, you know, acknowledging the investment, but they also aren't on the main drag there. You know, and they're... So they worked, that design, I think, worked there. I think that was the decision, at least, that I made when I voted here. But on that location and right on the curve and as this piece starts to get finished and done out, I think it, I think the elevation needs to reflect or it needs to merge better with what's existing and what's proposed to be done. To the board, any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grott?
Because I don't want to hold this up, gentlemen. So can we, can we approve it subject to working things out with the planning department? Or are you open to that? Can I hear that from you?
Well, thank you, Mr. Grott. Through the chair, I'd like to just respond to that comment. So when we were here early on in 2021, there was quite a bit of deliberation and discussion regarding the elevations. And if you recall, we had different siding that was proposed. At that time, Mr. Chairman, if you recall, you had asked for certain things to be done to sort of break the units up. We complied with that and we followed that to the T. And so now what we're doing is we're finishing the project. It will have a leasing and maintenance office. And to ask for a different brand, I think it's, with all due respect, it's very unreasonable to feel that we shouldn't be able to build the exact same units we're building right on our land. It's contiguous to where we're building. The other thing is, redwood is in fact along Lakeside Boulevard. We've submitted drawings, we've submitted photos. And those buildings are merely, they're mostly siding with very little brick at the bottom. You know, our product is a brick product, it's a stone product, then you have the vinyl siding above. So we want to make sure when our customers come in and they're leasing one of our units, that it's consistent with what we're building there. This pad was pre-approved, we're in the same exact footprint. And I respectfully ask that this board allow us to build the exact same elevations that were just approved just months ago. It's very important to us and to our branding and I hope that you'll take that into consideration. I did submit photographs, if you'd like to see them, of the adjacent properties right behind our parcel, which is contiguous to it. Again, it's redwood. Even if you look at the senior housing down the road, it doesn't look like that drawing. Lakeside Villas, which is next door, again, doesn't look like that. That's existing there. So we're hoping that we can build as we propose. It's a branding issue.
Hang on a second. No, let me, he questioned something I had said. You took over an existing development. This wasn't raw land that you developed.
That's correct.
With a concept.
Correct.
So you came in something that was markedly different than what had been built there.
Correct.
And there were some latitudes that were done there.
Yes.
To now say that, well, you allowed me to do it here, you should allow me. It's not only fair that we allow you to do it everywhere. I don't buy that argument. Because it's a different, it's a different, it's a different location.
It's not, Mr. Chair. It's contiguous to the project.
All right. I'm talking. When I talk, you don't have to listen to me, but just don't talk over me, all right?
That's fine.
So it's a different, it is a different location, there's a different impact on the community. When this was developed, it was developed with a grander concept. Now, we all know a lot of the things that went wrong there, okay? But what we're trying to do is piece together, allow for what? Some flexibility for development, but also to make it look a little truer to the sense that was originally envisioned. Mr. Grott?
Yes, I just want to ask you a question. Is it, how difficult is to get material right now on existing market?
Extremely.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's a supply chain issue, but, you know, we have arrangements with this material that we've already been using. We have that at our suppliers.
That's what I'm driving, yeah.
And again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody on this board, but I have to just respectfully disagree. If you look at town, at the Lakeside Boulevard, east to west, there is not a question, any one of us can drive by there and see, that those units are in fact not what you see on this drawing. And if you look at redwood, it is on Lakeside Boulevard. Our parcel's the last one there and again, you know, you'll make your determination, I'll respect whatever it is. But I'm just telling you that from a branding perspective, it's unreasonable. We have 105 units that are already there. We're marketing. What's, you know, when we're leasing these and we have a... What's, you know, when we're leasing these and we have a maintenance office in there, people are going to be confused, they're going to say, well, this, this, this doesn't even look the same, it's, you know, is this the same project? Is this, you know, representation of what we're leasing? So I'm, I'm, normally I'm very sort of backed, you know, and I'll give you whatever you want, but this is something that's very important to me and that's why I'm, you know, giving pushback on it, so. But, you know, you'll make the determination, how you see fit.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Gallo, you cannot compare this with Shelby Manor, it's been around several years, you can't compare the two. I know what you're trying to do, but you can't do that. Mr. Moffett said we are trying to piece together this, this whole parcel. We could piece it together by not having different-looking buildings all over the place. This looks, to me, looks like a 90s-style design. I don't know what your branding is, I don't know what you're looking for to get as far as a brand, but certainly I think if you went ahead and did something different, that the brand would be more upscale, especially on the backside, because on the front, okay, the front you've got a lot of brick, that's the predominant thing that I see as far as material. The back, garages and siding.
But that's what we're building there, that's, that is the development.
I know, I know what you're, I know what you're saying, but I'm just letting you know, it doesn't, Mr. Groth had made a suggestion of approving this subject to working with the planning department to figure it out. To me, it doesn't sound like that you're going to be able to do that, given, given the pushback that you're giving to our recommendations to try to make this a little more upscale.
Oh, okay, I, can you give me a suggestion on what you're looking for?
I'm not a designer, but I can tell you this, and you have samples that you have here that I'm sure you've seen.
Those products failed, sir. That, just so you know, the town live-work product failed, it's not a-
Not the design.
Viable design. You're just telling me that's not.
Maybe the product as it was built, but the design certainly is, is a little more enhanced than this 90s style.
The items that, that were presented here aren't, aren't the failed.
He's not even listening.
All right.
No, the thing that I was holding up, this, this project here that I was holding up, that hasn't failed, I don't think people even started building that yet, so I don't know how you can say that's failed.
I refer to the live-work units, sir.
I understand what you're referring to. I was, you asking about designs and I just showed this to you, that, that's all, that's all I was suggesting.
I, I think we can acquiesce, Mr. Groth, from your motion. We'll work with the planning and try to come up with a concept so you can conditionally include the site plan in that way.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Groth.
Yeah, especially, I, I think, gentlemen, you know, the feeling here among, among the, the members here, and, and again, I guess I don't want to hold you up, I, I know you, you dare to build, make money and everything else, but I have, I have to make sure that we have a commitment that there's going to be a meeting of the minds and, and, and get this approved today, but you have to go back and talk to Julie.
No, we understand and I think we can do that.
Okay.
I feel comfortable and confident.
Mr. Gallo, do you want to offer a comment? Do you think you can work?
Pardon me?
Do you think you can work with Julie to, to come up with something that-
Sure, we have no choice, of course.
Julie, she's great to work with.
And we, yeah, we've worked with her all the time, but yes, the answer is yes, we'll go back and, again, we're at your mercy, so we're going to follow what you want, you know, yeah, we'll go back and do it.
I think it's a refining process and it might work best that way, instead of trying to define it tonight.
Do you like to make a motion?
I'm, I'm looking for my backup here. Yeah, there it is. I got it, I got it. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve site plan number 22-03, Tony Gallo for Town Center Villas Two, subject to submission of revised plans addressing all department, engineering and planning commission comments. Do I need to add anything to this?
Need to add that, that, with, with a, with a consensus on, on elevations with the planning director?
So be it, thank you.
Is there support of that?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. I'm going to have a, and maybe I'll ask the attorney to, almost more of a, of a matter of process, I mean, can, do we really want to abdicate our responsibilities on elevations and approving elevations? I mean, do we want to put that on the, on the, on the planner to do that? And I don't know how, you know, how much time that's going to expedite.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem working with Mr. Gallo, but I would rather have it come back to the planning commission just for a cursory review.
Yeah, for a, for a final approval.
Yeah.
All right, I think that, Mr. Groth has said something, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, as long as we're not, we're not destroying a good project or delaying it months and months and months, so.
But, I mean, it's a fair point that, listen, we're not going to negotiate what that is amongst this board, you know, nine, nine members and a planner and, and the two gentlemen here, but perhaps if the planner can work with the developer to come up with something that's a little more, ties in more, then it comes, can come back here for a very quick and-
Yes.
-easy approval, so.
I think that's the best, best you can get.
All right.
When would the next meeting be?
Two weeks.
February-
Second and, second and fourth, uh, Tuesdays, or what is it, Mondays.
Mr. Chairman.
February 14th.
Just so I'm clear on the motion, the, Mr. Gallo is going to get with Julie on the elevations and it's going to come back to us for a review of the elevations. Okay.
That clarification is good with the motion maker?
Yes.
Be the seconder. Okay, thank you. And the supporter?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll call the, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Chair of the Chaffs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck. Next item is site plan number 18-17, special land use number eight, Joseph Baglica for Gateway Engineering.
Mites Gandhi from Gateway Engineering.
If you can make sure you speak into the microphone.
Mites Gandhi, uh, from Gateway Engineering, 8155 Ansbury, Shelby Township.
What are you requesting of this body?
Uh, this is a, this is a shopping plaza that been approved before and we are asking for the extension for the site plan approval.
Julie, do you want to offer your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This site plan was approved back in 2018 and typically, once we approve a site plan, it is good for two years and the applicant, during that two years, the applicant has to start the engineering process. In this case, the applicant has not, due to the pandemic and he's asking for an extension. Now, my motion, my motion gives him until October 16th, but it's up to the discretion of the board on how long they would like to extend this site plan since it has also lapsed.
How long does your, how long does your client need to, to finish this, to start and complete the project?
So we do have engineering approval, we almost had the approval, we had all the other agency that we submitted the plans, we had minor comments back from the building department, which hopefully we will work it out and as Julie suggested, October 16th, I think we can make it.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's a lot of time, given that you've already, your client has already taken, what, 2018? So we're talking, what? So five years to, to, to complete it? What about, can they, can they, can they complete the project by the end of this year?
Yeah, we can. All the approvals, yes. And hopefully we can start maybe before fall, the construction.
Well, if you're starting in the fall, finishing by the end of the year might be a little challenging.
I don't think that can possible, the construction.
So they need the full 20 additional months to, to do this project, to do this strip mall, this little strip mall?
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Groth.
Mr. Chairman, I sympathize with the businesses because I know how difficult it is to do anything, normal circumstances, but with this COVID pandemic and everything else, I know everything is being pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, so you got my sympathy and, and, and I, I'm willing to work, personally, I mean, my opinion is, I'm willing to work with you and give you what you need to be successful. But then at the same time, we, we can't just go on and on forever, so we got to do what's reasonable for you and, and what, what we can all agree on. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend to the township board, board approval to extend rezoning petition number 5-18 and site plan special land use number 18-17, SLU 8, for Bassam Murad located at the southwest corner of 22 Mile Road and Van Dyke for a period of three years starting on October 16th, 2020 and to expire on October 16th, 2023.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Chair of the Chaffs. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Planning Director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Since September, our department has been working with the Community Relations Department and the Parks and Rec Department to update our recreation plan. The plan is updated every five years and in order to apply for state grants, we have to have an adopted rec plan. So like I said, we've been working with it with a number of departments. The rec plan, the draft plan is in front of you, so we'll need the recommending body, which is the planning commission at this, at this point, because we do not have a Parks and Rec Committee to, to approve this and move to the township board.
Okay. Any questions on the, the draft master plan for the planner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the proposed resolution.
Move to approve the resolution on the Parks and Rec master plan as presented.
For second. Moved by Turner, support by Meredith. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lur, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Chair of the Chaffs. Anything else under Planning Director's report?
Yes, just one more item. I emailed you an official's training by the MAP, Michigan Association of Planning. There's a number of courses on there that I would recommend, so we have some money in our education budget, if anybody is interested in applying, you know, for those courses or taking any of those courses, they are online and I would definitely recommend any of them, so if anybody's interested, please let me know and I can register you for the classes.
Great, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Julie, I hear the agreement.